Good evening. Welcome to the combined work session, regular in-person and virtual meeting for June 4th, 2024. The first item on the work session agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance by the 2024-2025 Student Board Representatives, Tasneem Yasmin and Timothy Bijou.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome. Thank you both, Tasneem and Timothy. We'll see you at the end of the summer, okay? And congratulations.
Whoa, 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 they've got to do the fight song tonight.
Oh, they got a whole thing, right?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
You have to do the fight song in a whole speech.
Yeah, right? You got, like, we allotted 30 minutes for you guys, right?
I'm only, I'm only, good job breaking them in.
All right. Give me a heart attack, think I forgot something. Sorry. And now, the second item on our work session agenda is hidden, is a, is a presentation of the Service to Children Award by me, Board President Fields, and I need to dig into my email real quick, so just give me a moment. I have, like, 80 things open, just hold on. So for 2024, the Service to Children Award, since 1999, the Service to Children Award has been presented to a wide range of role players within our school district community for shaping, protecting, and enhancing the lives of our most valuable resource, our children. Now, in its 25th year, Upper Darby School District continues in the tradition of recognizing the recipient of this prestigious award for their unselfish dedication to our children. Serving as a model for inspiration and emulation, we are blessed to work with so many in our organization who exemplify these qualities every day and could very well receive this recognition. It is always a tough choice. It is with great pleasure that the Upper Darby Board of School Directors and the School District recognizes the incredible contribution and continued excellence of Jessica Conley by bestowing on her, by bestowing on her with the Service to Children Award for the 2023-2024 school year. Jessica Conley was hired on March 18th, 2019, as a special education learning support teacher at the high school. She became an autistic support teacher at the high school in January 2021. And my autistic support staff, you've got a special place in my heart, okay? I appreciate every single one of you. Jess excels in the classroom, but it's her work outside of the classroom that has left the biggest impact on the school and community. Mrs. Conley is one of the assistant athletic directors at the high school, placing her, placing her all throughout student life, including the Unified Bachi Program. Jess works with multiple outside agencies, bridging the gap between school-based academic programming and lifetime training and career readiness. She organizes community-based instructional activities, an annual SOC drive to celebrate World Down Syndrome Day, the Polar Plunge, and the Best Buddies Program, the April Showers Event at the high school, and the many contributions and activities of the students working with the Special Olympics. In addition to all of her contributions to the Special Education Department, Jess Conley has been the faculty co-advisor for the Distributive Education Clubs of America, DECA, a partner in the Business Education Department, and a, and a teacher leader as she takes coursework from her Advanced Education Degree and her Administrative Certification Program. On top of all, on, on top of all of what she does inside and outside of the classroom, she is a dedicated wife and mother to Emily and current royal Grace Conley. Congratulations to Jessica for earning the 25th Annual Service to Children Award. The third item on the work session agenda, computers, is the recognition of the 2023-2024 Student Board Representatives by Board President Don Fields. It actually says, Mr. Don Fields, which is a little awkward, but all right. So, a few words for our outgoing student representatives, Fernando Santos and J.D. McCants, Matt Cants, pardon me. Okay. Jay McCants, thanks, guys. I've only been doing it all year, but it's all right. I want to say, I want to say, we really enjoyed the level of depth and engagement you both provided in your student reports. I was always pleasantly surprised by the abundance of interesting and informative detail you provided. I can say, I don't know what has happened to every student representative after they've graduated. I do know I ran into Sarah Ibrahim at SAP the other day. She is enjoying her internship at the software company I work at, she says hi to Dan. And I know my brother was student rep in 1986, and he is now assistant council in Prince George's County School District in Maryland. That's kind of like if Kyle, our solicitor, was the solicitor for every school district in Delaware County. I do, I do believe, so I don't know if, if things will end up like that for you guys, but I do believe that if you approach your schooling and your work with the same effort and engagement you applied to being a student representative, you'll both be very successful. It was a pleasure and an honor having the two of you on the board with us. Thank you very much. The final item on the work session agenda is a message from UDEA President Ms. Linda Fox.
President Fields, Dr. McGarry, members of the board and administrative team, on behalf of the UDEA, the Upper Darby Education Association, I just wanted to thank you for having for this wonderful year. Dr. McGarry, I would like to spotlight your participation in our conversations. We've had some really hard conversations this year. He's here. My team is here. Yep. We've had some hard conversations, but we've always been able to come out and try and be solutions-based and try and work through all of our issues. I would also like to spotlight Mrs. Kelly Simone and Dr. Marshallak, as well as Dr. Manfree for their leadership with our ad hoc committee and some of the other initiatives that we are working through. Congratulations, Jamie. I don't know if everyone in here knows, but you, he was given the Friend of Education Award at the UDEA Retirement Bank with the other day, and our, my board and I agree, we could not have picked a better person. Thank you for a wonderful year. Have a wonderful summer, Dr. McGarry. I didn't forget about the personal day, and I have all the board members as my witness. Have a great summer.
On a button, fantastic. All right. The regular in-person and virtual meeting of the Upper Darby School District Board of School Directors will please come to order. There was a closed session this evening from 5:30 PM until 7:30 PM for matters to be, to be discussed within the limitations for closed deliberations as prescribed by Pennsylvania Act 19, Act 93 of 1998. For this evening's meeting, there were personnel and litigation matters. Roll call, Board Secretary, Ms. Rogers, please.
Ms. Brittany Williams.
Present.
Ms. Mitchell.
Present.
Ms. Murphy Mercy.
Present.
Mr. Hussein.
Present.
Mr. War Savage.
Present.
Mr. Des Noyers.
Present.
Ms. Glenn.
Present.
Ms. Deborah Williams.
Present.
Mr. Fields.
Present.
The district posted this evening's agenda to board docs at least 24 hours prior to the commencement of this meeting. Is there a motion to approve that previously posted agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Are there any amendments to offer?
There are no amendments.
The agenda has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please signify by saying aye oppose. Those abstaining, please signify by saying aye abstain. We now have a board resolution and recognition of service. Okay? I'm going to offer a resolution in the name of Director Rachel Mitchell. This is her last meeting. And I need you to sit over here. You got to move.
You're now officially superintendent.
Yeah.
For about five minutes.
So I, I have a couple items I want to get into the record. First, I want to give you, oh, I do have this. This is how long, this is how long you've been working and advocating for the schools, if you remember this picture, right?
I do.
This is, uh, this is Rachel Mitchell with some board director's mom, and the previous state rep, previous to Representative Curry, and some, oh, Stacey Holly, who is always active, and a gentleman I don't remember, who's that?
Um, he was the former superintendent of William Penn. I'll just say, just for this, for the state reps here, I spoke at this rally, and this state rep heard my voice coming down the hall, so she hurried up to get a picture. So, I just want to say that.
So that, that's for you to keep, enjoy. I know you'll find a place for it. I have a card from the PSBA, and then this is a recognition of your 11 years of service from the PSBA. Uh, my mom picked up the frame, so you can thank her for that. Right? There we go. Everybody can see. There you go. Okay. I do have, I do have a note here from Jennifer Hoff, okay? She says, hi, Rachel, Jennifer Hoff of the William Penn School District. She is also a board director. I don't know, has she been on the board as long, her board as long as you?
Yeah.
Maybe a little longer? Okay. Sorry, I could not make it over to say goodbye, but I have two school board meetings tonight. You know the drill well. Thanks to, all right, so, I'm going to get into her comments. You have been so important, this is from Jennifer Hoff, you have been so important to me as a fellow school board director and a friend. Whenever I had a question or wanted to commiserate about something, you were there for me with a friendly, calm voice and some great advice. You know your school board stuff. All the trips to Harrisburg, the press conferences, and the school events were so much better with you present. Your leadership in Upper Darby made my leadership in William Penn so much better. Thanks for taking all my crazy phone calls and working through the issues our district share with me. Thank you so much for your 11 years of service to Upper Darby School District. I wish you and yours all the love and happiness in your future endeavors. Stay in touch, friend. I appreciate more than you know. Much love, Jennifer. Okay? I have, let me make sure. It is appropriate that you are stepping down right at high school graduation. High school graduation is definitely the end of a chapter in people's personal stories. You could even say it's the first book in a multi-book epic series of books, epic series of books. And the analogy of epic stories is appropriate here. I have this graphic up on the screen. Big stories, epic stories, have a common archetype known to the English teachers in the room as the hero's, hero's journey. It's made up of 12 steps, and you've gone through all of them. You had a call to adventure, to meet a challenge. You ran for school board. You faced the ordeal, the, the hero's biggest test. You became a school board director, and you are returning home triumphant. What you may not realize is that your story continued after that initial journey. You began the cycle again, but this time, you were the most critical, indispensable, underappreciated part of the hero's journey. You became the mentor. Luke had Obi-Wan and Yoda. The Karate Kid had Mr. Miyagi. Katniss Everdeen had Haymitch. Unless somebody liked that call out, good. I want you, they're not all here, but look at the elected officials here. Think about the four major elected positions in this community. Mayor of Upper Darby, two state reps, the chairperson of the Delaware County Council. They all served on this school board, and they all came after you. You led the way, Rachel, and you made this possible. So when the epic story of Upper Dar, Upper Darby School District is written, there will be two major eras, before RM and after RM. The time before Rachel Mitchell was on the board, and the time after Rachel Mitchell got on the board. In 2013, you did a very impressive thing for the time. You won a school board seat. This was back when it, when that was a difficult thing to do for an outsider, when most people didn't, this is when, like, most people didn't know what a school board was.
That's true.
And you were explaining it. What people need to remember is that when you first got elected, you were in the minority. In fact, no one on this current or the previous board ever served in the minority, and it wasn't easy for you. Soon after that, when, when we gained the majority, you became the board president. You had to manage and lead a split board. It was a year of four, five-hour meetings, a superintendent's search, a contract negotiation, board leaks, starting the process of building a new middle school, and many other challenges. It was a tough year, and this board has yet to experience a year like that since then. You led with grace, patience, empathy always, and defiance when needed. You built the foundation for people to follow you. This party, this board, this district, this community is better off now than before you were here, and will continue to improve because of the work you have done and the legacy you leave behind. Thank you for letting me part, be part of your hero's journey, and for being the mentor that I needed. I would like to offer the following resolution in the name of Director Rachel Mitchell. Whereas, Rachel, and I appreciate Director War Savage's help with this, whereas, Rachel Mitchell, in appreciation for the work you have done, for the focus and professionalism you have brought to the board, for the pursuit of continuous improvement, for your dedication to always doing what is best for the students and the community without partisanship and without favoritism, this board dedicates itself to those qualities as well as the following. Whereas, the Upper Darby School Board of Directors rededicates itself to exemplifying opportunity, unity, and excellence through diligent and empathetic service to all community stakeholders. Whereas, the Upper Darby Board of School Directors continues to highlight the unalienable right for every student to have their educational futures equitably invested in. Whereas, the Upper Darby School, the Upper Darby Board of School Directors also acknowledges those who served previously in the position and will do so in the future with fidelity and distinct royal pride. Whereas, Upper Darby School District values nurturing, learning, and teaching environments, supports and respects educators as trained professionals, and is committed to ensuring that all students can thrive regardless of their zip code, color, or background. Whereas, Upper Darby School District supports education that values honesty about who we are, integrity in how we treat others, and courage to do what is, what's right by listening to, learning from, and respecting diverse viewpoints. Whereas, Upper Darby School District values our educators who through pedagogically sound, age-appropriate curricula and teaching standards, help students understand our collective past, spark curiosity and critical thinking, and prepare all students to meet the challenges of our multicultural present and future. Therefore, be it resolved on this fourth day of June 2024 by the Upper Darby Board of School Directors, that the district stands steadfast in its commitment to foster an inclusive and culturally responsive educational environment where every student, educator, and community member is treated with dignity and respect, and condemns racism, sexism, and all forms of bigotry in our schools and community. With that, are there any comments from the board? Oh, I need a motion. I need a motion.
Second.
I need a first.
So moved.
Thank you. Are there any comments from the board? Go ahead.
Um, wow, that's, that was really special.
I got, I got gifts.
Um, I'm honored and embarrassed all at the same time, to be honest with you, because when I set out to run for school board, we were in a tumultuous time, and I remember saying to your mother and to Stacy Holly, who ran alongside me at the time, that this was not anything about me, and I never, ever wanted it to be about me. I couldn't care less who I was. I just wanted to improve our school district for every child who's sitting in this room, for the parents that are in this room, for those who graduated, for the teachers, for the, at the staff. There was just so much potential here. I mean, my kids met amazing people from all different places across the world, and it was so overwhelming to me. But we lacked some things, and, you know, one of them was major funding from the state. But there were other things that could have been done better over the years, like facility improvements and things like that. And I couldn't care less if it was Rachel Mitchell on the ballot. I just wanted someone to do it, and all of you are those some people, and there's going to be a new person that you're going to appoint that's going to serve in my place, and you're that some person, whoever that is, and whoever the future school directors are. I'll just say, all those things are what a good school director would want. This should never be about politics. It should never be about friendships. I lost a lot of them serving on this board, a lot, okay? Literally, I, I was shredding papers, and I'm sorry to keep you guys here, but I was shredding papers of the people who signed my petition, friends of my, people that I literally invited into my home, broke bread with, supported their families through all kinds of things, special education matters, support counseling, I was a former, former social worker. I lost a lot of friends doing this, and what I will say is it was worth it because I made, I helped with this team of 10, and especially with Dan, make the lives of children better here at Upper Darby. Again, it's not about me. I, I thank you for the opportunity. It was the honor of my life.
I just would like to say, and I know that's said just to you personally, Rachel, but just thank you. As a new board member, the learning curve is real, and you just welcomed me in, and you've been very supportive, so I thank you for your mentorship.
You're welcome.
Director Mitchell, I would just like to thank you for your hard work and dedication to the students, the staff, the families, the district, and the community. It's been an honor to serve with you and get to know you. I wish you the best in the future.
Thanks, Neil.
Um, Rachel, you are truly a servant leader, so thank you for your wisdom, your kind-hearted spirit, and you're truly inspirational, so thank you.
And we'll get the public comment in one moment. I'm going to take my comment, I do have gifts. So you guys got a fixer-upper?
Yeah, we did.
Right? A little bit of a fixer-upper. So, I know you're going to be working on that house, and this is a tool belt. And you, you should try it on.
No.
Matt, Matt, I said to Matt, I called, I talked to Matt, I said, um, I got this canvas one, and it looks pretty, he's like, no, 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 get the leather one. I don't know why.
I didn't say that.
I don't, he was like, no, I'd really like to see, I know, I think, we're going to be taking pictures, you're going to want a picture of that.
All right.
You got to help me with this one. Here, here, pull.
Oh, God.
It's heavy.
So these are my own tools.
These are your own tools?
I need them. I needed them all this time on the board, too, and living here in Drexel Hill with all the fixing up, yeah.
And the great thing, I hope you don't mind, they're pink.
Okay. Come on.
Hey, I, I'm, I'm down with this.
Oh, my God. At least I know it's mine.
Yeah. I mean, I'm a little jealous. All right. There you go. You have to put that away.
Okay.
Okay?
There can't be more done.
And then, no, I got one more thing.
I'll give you my results later. Yes.
And I, I hope, I hope you take the time, like, maybe you guys think in the new house to go, kind of go a little retro and, and take a moment, maybe, maybe spend the money to, um, get like a phone line in there, right? Does anybody remember?
Money bank.
No? Batman? Batman, right? The Red, I, we're going to need a direct line, right? Where our calls, where our calls will come in.
Not a problem, not a problem. I love it.
Right? It's our regular, you know, the Rachel phone.
I'll give you your own number.
Okay, fantastic, fantastic. That'll be great. And, so those are the gifts.
Thanks.
Again, we're taking pictures, and you're supposed to wear the belt. And I now invite the public to make comments, and I don't go through a list. Oh, oh, and Desiree has something for you, too, I'm sorry.
Whoever feels these shoes has big shoes.
So, I invite the public to come up and make, I see, I see some state reps in the audience, and I know she has to drive back to Harrisburg, so you're coming up first.
Thank you. State Representative Heather Boyd, and I did drive home from Harrisburg. We're in session right now, but I could not miss your last meeting on the board, Rachel. So, I served with Rachel on the board from 2015 to 2018. The step right there, meet the mentor, that's Rachel Mitchell for me. You've been a mentor, a friend, you've led when you needed to lead, you've advocated when you needed to advocate, you served when you needed to serve, and you fought when you needed to fight, and I have learned so much from you. I wouldn't be the state representative in this community without you. And so I got a citation for you from the State House, so if you just would let me read it really quickly. Whereas Rachel Mitchell has demonstrated exemplary dedication and service while serving on the Upper Darby School Board for a decade, and whereas her unwavering commitment to strengthening and maintaining our community's educational excellence despite fiscal constraints surged her advocacy for fair funding, and whereas through her belief that public education is vital to the strength of our community, she served on various committee, committees, including the Parent Involvement Program, remember those? Comprehensive Planning Committee, and as School Board Vice President and School Board President. And whereas her advocacy in educational equity, well-rounded programming, professional development, and climate and culture programming serves the future needs of Upper Darby students and the community and their success. Therefore, the House of Representatives of the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania joins with citizens across the Commonwealth in honoring Rachel D. Mitchell as she commits herself to her continued advocacy for fair funding. We offer best wishes for continued strides of excellent service and endeavors in the year to come, and directs that a copy of this citation, sponsored by State Representative Heather Boyd of the 163rd Legislative District, be transmitted to Rachel D. Mitchell in recognition of her excellent service and commitment to educational advocacy in the Upper Darby School District. Thank you.
Oh, thank you, Representative Boyd.
Oh, no, no, there's a couple other people. Any school director's moms here? Oh, mine. Come on up.
I'm the school director's mom. And you know, Dawn, you said almost everything I was going to say. That's the trouble when, you know, you think alike, when your mother and son, Rachel, you've been such a good friend, and, great, I'm going to cry. The one thing I'm going to tell, one anecdote, because I think Dawn said mostly everything, but when Rachel first got on the board, there was just one other Democrat on, and so she worked very hard across the aisle, the Republicans respected her, she worked with them. But there was a meeting, I don't know what it was about, and we had it in the auditorium, people were... But there was a meeting, I don't know what it was about, and we had it in the auditorium. People were, oh, bent out of shape about something. And, uh, and, um, and, and Rachel got up and said something and everybody started to applaud. And there was a woman, a Republican, Judy Gentile, who'd been on the board a long time, and she stood up, she's just a little thing, and she didn't have a mic and she yelled, you could, bounced off the back of the auditorium and she pointed at Rachel and she said, Rachel Mitchell's the best thing that ever happened to this school board. And she was right. Thank you.
You know, I, I served on the school board for four years. It was probably the best four years of my life. Um, it is a great honor to serve this community. Uh, the school district is not going to be the same without you. The community is not going to be the same without you. You know, I, I'm, I'm going to read about the school district in New Jersey where you're moving to because I'm sure, uh, but if you just look at the school board directors that served with you and where they are now, that is truly due to your dedication and, and your mentorship. Every single one of them would agree. Um, it's been a pleasure and honor. I do have a card for you and that's really it. So thank you.
Thank you, David.
You know, Dawn said it all. I mean, but just thank you for your service. You know, you are just such an example of what real service is and how it should be done. And, uh, when I came on the school board, we were all new and, well, not all of us, half of us were new and we were given mentors. And I was very lucky that my mentor was Rachel and I didn't know Rachel until I decided to run for office. And she took me under her wing and taught me everything she knew and showed me the ropes and really taught me how to be a public servant. And so I thank you for your service. We are so sad to see you go. I know you're going to enjoy your time in New Jersey with your new house and your tool belt. But thank you for all that you have done over the last 11 years for our school district and, you know, we would not be where we are if it wasn't for you and your leadership. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor.
I just echo what everyone has said about Rachel. Um, I, I think it's easy, it's easy when we're sitting back here and looking at these people sitting in these fancy chairs to forget that this is a job that you do for hours and hours a week for the amazing salary of zero dollars. And, um, and so on top of all of the regular work that all of the board members do, Rachel really has been just this amazing mentor to all of us. Um, answering questions, you know, you wanted to know, where do I find that on board docs? What, who do I ask about such and such? What on earth did that thing that Dan said mean the other day? Rachel's the person who, who Yeah, yeah, yeah. Uh, but you don't under, what you don't understand, Dan, is that you got about a tenth the calls you would have gotten. Anyway, um, just we, the, this building is a testament to the work that you've done here. The Aronamink, what we're doing in Clifton Heights, all of these things, they're, they're, that's your legacy. You should be so proud. I'm so proud to know you. Um, we're going to miss you a ton, but thank you so much.
Thanks, Meredith.
I am Danielle Blackwell, Councilwoman Blackwell. This is the 4th District and I'm just, I'm boasting, thank you for everything that you've done, your service. So many things that I could say, but I just want to say thank you. And if you are a product of the public schools district, I am one as well. You can say rah rah. Let's say, let's thank you rah rah. Come on, let's say thank you. Come on. Public schools, come on, the public schools matter and you've done a wonderful job and we do appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you, Danielle.
All right, if there's, nobody's lining up, so if there's no more public comment for the resolution, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. I have all this stuff up here.
While, while you're doing that, can I, can I? I think it's, I think it's important for people that are, I think here they're going to fill Rachel's shoes, that these meetings are important and they don't, they're not short. And I know there's young people here in the audience that we're going to recognize later, but I think it's important for you to understand a couple of things too about advocacy and why the people up here volunteer their time to make your lives better. Just personally for me, I just want to say to Rachel Mitchell, first of all, you have expensive taste. I had to call Monica and say, Monica, listen, I have a little bit going on. It's the end of the year. I can't believe she actually did this to me. And she's leaving the district. What's her drink of choice? And so at first it was like, oh, it's just a red wine, not a big deal. I'm like, all right, cool, pretty, pretty easy. And then it was like, no, you know, I'm wrong. It's a white wine. I'm like, oh, it's fine. And then it's this fancy bottle of wine. You know, I'm an educator.
I didn't know it was you. She was smart. She was asking me.
So, you know. Now I'm going to have to ask for a raise. Uh, which I think is on the agenda tonight. But in all seriousness, I'm glad we can laugh with each other now because I don't know if the audience totally understands the journey of the Dan McGarry, Rachel Mitchell, uh, friendship that it is today. Um, Rachel truly began her advocacy as one of a few people when school board meetings literally went 20 to 25 minutes. School board meetings were one time a month. There were no committee meetings. I did say that to you a few times over the years. Uh, they were 20 to 25 minutes. They were one time a month. And then the year the stimulus money was cut after Rendell was leaving office, uh, we started to lose money. I see advocacy in the back of the room from Children's First. Um, and we lost stimulus money, uh, and Rachel started to show up at meetings. Rachel Mitchell, uh, Mrs. Rucci and a guy named Damian War Savage, uh, started to show up at school board meetings and rarely ever before were there really much public comment. That first year, there were somewhat like close to 28 to 30 positions cut. Most of secondary and elementary school reading positions were cut. Nobody came out. Nobody came out when those jobs were cut. And I'm getting to that, unless you want to tell the story, which is the part of this relationship that's important. You know, for Ms. Huff to say that you're like this empathetic, easygoing and, and approach, well, I have never felt that totally. So I'd like to talk to her because I have a relationship with her too. I'd like to talk to her about how come I never got that? I got, there's trash outside of there. This is going on. The water's leaking. So the one thing that's important about that relationship with you is that you have expectations of the district and of what we can or cannot accomplish. Um, and I do agree with everybody, Wild takes a team and everybody's involved in all these different types of things. Um, you know, all the board, there's a whole team that's here. I definitely think that you push and push and push. And I'm not looking for anybody in the audience that is interviewing tonight to be the next Rachel Mitchell at six o'clock in the morning. Somebody who watches all the social media and lets you know what's going on every single step of the way. You're looking for that? I'm not. But I do think that, you know, some of the important factors is there's an audience of people here, almost a lot of members of UDAAS are in the back of the room, teachers that are here, the salaries in the school district. You're a huge advocate of increasing teacher salaries, which is huge. A huge advocate of keeping administrators in the district and finding a way to compensate administrators in the district. Always been you pushing, pushing to keep and retain good people, which is a huge, huge deal. And obviously the facilities, we could go on and on. But in the short period of less than five years, we have done 20 years worth of work and sometimes I wonder if I want to thank you for that or, or cry. But either way, we are where we are and I think your expectation of advocacy in those areas um, is certainly a, a big deal to me on a personal level. I, I wouldn't be where I am without your pushing. I know our relationship started off in a rocky situation, but I think it's in a good place. Uh, and I appreciate everything that you've done for me in my life and my career. And, you know, I know that this is not something that you want to do. I know that it's something you're doing to support your family and your loved ones, which I think is an important thing for even the kids that are in the audience. There's always something to learn from something. You start to advocate for something and life will take you to a different place where you have to advocate and do more for your family and it's okay. It's what you leave behind for other people to carry forward. That's just as important as where you started. So I want to thank you and know that you're in good hands for the time being. We'll see how Dawn holds up. Um, and then, and we'll go from there, but best of luck to you and we wish you the best.
I just want to say just one more thing. And I said it to a couple of your coworkers on my way from the executive session to here. Every, not every, I'm not going to speak for all these board members, but there's been many a board member who has started this journey with, um, wanting to change something, in particular thinking that the answer to solve some of the problems of this district is to, um, you know, replace the superintendent of schools. Um, especially this one. I, I'm, I'm And, and not for nothing, but I've gone to many, 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 too many. I don't have too much time on my hands at one time in my life. But, um, PSBA trainings where, um, other school directors thought that was the answer to solve their district's problems. It is not, especially with this one, because this one will take your call at 6:00 AM or 10 o'clock at night or send you articles at whatever time of night he decides to help you, um, be a better board member. And, um, and, and genuinely wants to care for all of the people in this room and then some. But anyway, I'll just say that everybody wants to start out someplace. They think that's the road. When I first started this advocacy journey, um, in 20, I don't even know, I feel like it was 2006 because I remember the first day I pulled up to the Upper Darby School District and I took a look around and I said, where did my, where'd you move me? I, to my husband. I, I literally was, I'd never seen schools in the condition that our schools were in. And, um, I walked my daughter into kindergarten and I looked around and I thought, oh my. And, and, and honestly, all of our children, the ones that are here tonight that are going through this and really want to go home, they had to sort of go to school there. And I was in one of, my kid was going to one of the newer schools, Ms. Fox's school, Hillcrest. Uh, it was one of the newer schools and I, I looked around at, you know, pipes wrapped with insulation and, you know, floors in disrepair and ceiling tile. And I thought, I'm sending my baby here. And I, I said, we're not staying here very long. Well, 17 and a half years later here, we still were. But, um, anyway, at the end of the day, every day, when you're serving on this board, you have to keep the entire community in mind. It's not about your personal things. It's not about his job or those guy's job or the teachers in the back, their job. There, if, if you find people that really care, you want to find out how to keep them. So I'll just say, um, I hope my legacy here is that we elected a very, very, very good leader for this district. And it's not just a job for him. He can get a job anywhere. Trust me, they call him and he calls me and tells me they call him. So, um, but it, it, it's true. So it's, it's really, it's about what you as a community make the district along with your elected officials and your advocacy and for the students in the room. Someday you're going to vote and it's going to be for, you know, the lowliest position on the ballot is the Board of School Directors. And, um, but it's an important vote. So just know who they are and, um, and know that they're doing it for you for nothing. You know, alls you have to do is spend five minutes at the poll and make sure that you pick the people that are, what you think are the best. But at the end of the day, as long as you get people who care, you're going to be okay.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. A number of you are here for the superintendent's report, so let me get through these next few reports and we'll get into that. The minutes, the minutes of the combined work session, regular meeting of May 14th and the special meeting of May 28th are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Director Desiree Murphy-Morrissey with the report of the secretary.
The report of the secretary is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public and I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. The report of the treasurer, Director Brittany Williams.
The report of the treasurer is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We will now have the final report of the student representatives. Jade McCants and Fernando Santos.
Good evening, Board President Fields, members of the board, Dr. McGary and community members. For our June report, Jade and I decided to take a trip down memory lane and visit our alma matters one final time. We visited Garford Elementary School, Westbrook Park Elementary School, Drexel Hill Middle School and the Upper Darby High School.
Fernando and I had the pleasure of going to Westbrook Park Elementary School for our last report as part of our Alma Matter tour. I will never get tired of entering those doors and seeing how far I've come in my Upper Darby journey. Seeing some of my old teachers and beloved staff members warmed my heart and almost brought me to tears, brought me to tears. And even though Ms. Menager is new, she is a perfect addition to the Westbrook Park family and the students are lucky to have her and everyone else there because they all care so much about the students, whether it is safety, education, well-being or all of the above. Mrs. Menager was inspired by her wonderful mentors and leaders. She said, when you ask why kids want to be teachers, they say it's because of their own. And she had teachers and administrators encourage her. It is a wonderful experience to see how these kindergartners grow and mature into fifth graders, both physically and academically. She gets the best of both worlds, being able to deal with both children and teachers as an administrator and no day is the same. There is always something new to learn and experience and Mrs. Menager feels extremely lucky to have been placed where she is now. Mr. Comfort never thought he'd work in an elementary school. He was a high school math teacher and that's what he went to school for. However, one day while working as an assistant principal at the high school, he got to go to Stonehurst Elementary School and cover for half the day. At one point after Dr. Alaway had left, there was a group of students having a bad day and crying in the office. And dealing with that situation was a real eye opener. He said, the best thing about working at Westbrook is getting to work with those children and parents. Even if you're having a bad day, stepping into a kindergarten room or an autistic support classroom or any classroom at all improves your day. Mr. Comfort has been at Westbrook Park for eight years and working with everyone in the community has been an extremely wonderful and fulfilling experience. There will always be some challenges when it comes to education, but for Westbrook, communication has grown more difficult since so many young children have, now have di- digital devices with no, with, sorry, with which to communicate. Children don't really know how to communicate without the use of technology. Often students look at their phones and there is no connection between the two people speaking. The students we've had, they've had has, as a result of COVID early encounters are a little lost, but with more experience and guidance, they'll improve their interactions. They want to communicate, but the full know-how isn't all the way there. And it is not solely a Westbrook or a school district problem. It is a global one. However, there are many students there that participate in outdoor activities such as football and basketball and there was a large group of running club kids as well. Outside activities have been real enjoyable, enjoyable and helpful in that development. Westbrook wants to see academic improvement, particularly in math, as well as social growth in their students and an understanding of who they are and where they came from. When the students leave the school, Mr. Comfort and Mrs. Menager and the rest of the staff want them to represent themselves in the school with pride. There is a clear family atmosphere that extends not only to the staff, but also to the students. Whenever a problem arise, they always come together for each other, whether it's a fire in the community or a family being displaced. Westbrook always cares for and looks out for one another. When it comes to preparing classroom activities and assisting in any manner, everyone works together to help one other out. While it is not directly said, Mr. Comfort's presence in the building is what truly forms the culture. He knows everything about the school's students and their families and he produces a very good work and learning atmosphere. It is not a specific item. It is him personally. Mr. Comfort and Ms. Menager wanted to take the time to share a sense of gratitude and appreciation of the support the board has shown Westbrook and the entire district. Jobs in education can be tough, so they want to say thank you to the board for the great year and allowing them to work with these kids and families and they can't wait to see what next year brings.
As I walked through the halls of Garford Elementary School earlier last month for what would be my final visit as a student board representative, I couldn't help but feel a wave of nostalgia and emotion wash over me. Knowing that this would be my very last opportunity to engage with the school in this capacity. Knowing that this would be my very last opportunity to engage with the school in this capacity intensified the significance of the meeting with Garretford's principal, Mr. Bridges. The meeting provided Jade and me insights into the direction and vision for Garretford. Mr. Bridges' long-term vision is to make Garretford have even better morale. He wants students and staff members to walk around the building and feel good, motivated and excited about being at Garretford. I got to show Jade my quote-unquote "neck of the woods" and we can confirm that Garretford has done an excellent job of creating a positive environment. As Jade even pointed out, the bright and beautiful colors throughout the school that made it, and I quote, "feel like an actual elementary school." Mr. Bridges, the heartbeat of Garretford embodies a deep love for his role and the children he serves. While he once considered an administration path, his heart remains firmly rooted in the classroom where every high five and hug ignites him with purpose. He appreciates every moment spent in the company of his students, finding comfort in the idea that within their laughter and curiosity lies a blueprint for a brighter future. His dedication to their growth, not just academically, but emotionally and socially, socially, sorry, serves as a light of inspiration reminding us that the greatest reward lies not in accolades or titles, but in the immeasurable privilege of shaping the minds of the next generation. Principal Bridges also extends his heartfelt gratitude to the school board for their invaluable modifications to Garretford, enhancing the learning environment for everyone. He also commends Dr. McGary, whose tireless efforts have not only uplifted Garretford, but have also enriched elementary schools across the district, ensuring every child receives the best education possible. It's a pretty long one this month, the report, so.
This one's longer.
You guys can hold the applause until the end because you're gonna be clapping a bunch of times otherwise.
Another one of our stops was Drexel Hill Middle School, the wonderful building where Fernando and I met. Mrs. Palladino and Mrs. Rosen are two amazing women and administrators and the amount of effort, love and care they possess for Drexel Hill was ever-present during our interviews with them. And the school and their students completely reflect that. The biggest strategy Mrs. Palladino and Mrs. Rosen use in supporting students' social and emotional development is taking their time with students and trying to understand where they, where they're coming from. They really want to create an environment where the kids feel safe, happy to go there every day and look forward to seeing the staff just as much as they look forward to seeing them. That takes a lot of relationship building, time and patience because they need to know that their teachers and administrators have their back and are here to support them. Mrs. Palladino said, "Kids are gonna make mistakes. Adults make mistakes too. But if we make a mistake, we're gonna fix it. We're gonna do better next time and we're, we're still going to love you for that." When students feel good about themselves, it gives them the capacity to walk into classrooms and take risks while feeling safe with their teachers and being amongst their peers. With the development of technology on the rise, incorporating computers, particularly AI, can be beneficial in education. However, since the pandemic, students have constantly been on their, on screen, so Drexel Hill wants to maintain a healthy educational balance in the classroom. When teachers remove computers or technology from the lesson, there is more conversation, team building and hands-on activities. Mrs. Rosen is also looking into adding more reading and math interventions into their daily schedule to make up for some of the missing basic skills. There have been many great initiatives added to the school to contribute to positive school culture. It's important in middle school for students to have a sense of belonging and to have that community feel. It gives them something to look forward to. Drexel Hill has incorporated a lot of team building and fun activities for the kids that they really look forward to this year. For example, before spring break, they did a station rotation where the kids did some minute-to-win activities, some physical activities out on their new fields and a classroom-based activity. All of that is just as crucial as the curriculum and many times, great-character students have obtained Student of the Month awards. They are the ones who get to engage in the activities. Additionally, inside each grade, Drexel Hill now has purple and gold learning communities and within them are a president and a vice president. As we know, a lot of emotions run through middle schoolers. Combating the self-confidence and disagreements while finding appropriate times to create the socialization so that's, so it's not happening during a lesson in a classroom or during a hallway transition is one of the biggest challenges. Mrs. Palladino and Mrs. Rosen implemented 10 building expectations that are read every morning. They talk about cellphone use in the classroom, transitions in the hallways, et cetera. Staying consistent and hearing that every morning helps keep everybody on the same page. Drexel Hill's teachers, staff and administration are devoted to instilling a feeling of community in its great students. The library and classrooms are furnished and arranged to help the students feel at home. However, they are still aiming to create that welcoming ambiance in which the students feel as if they are traveling from one home to another. As soon as they walk in, they should have a positive attitude that goes a long way because it enhances everyone's experience where you have that connection. One of the most important things at Drexel Hill Middle School is to create a family-safe environment. One of the most common concerns for parents is that their children are growing older and taking on more responsibilities. So building relationships, understanding and development stages are some of those, are some of the opportunities. And in a world where kids may not be super nice, Drexel Hill is attempting to discourage that so they can do well in their classrooms in the long run because they adore all of their students and want them to succeed.
I said it.
One more, one more, one more.
No, oh yeah, there's more. Um, moving on to a recent meeting with Dr. Alloway, Jade and I asked about his visions for the school's future over the next couple of years, along with the challenges he anticipates. Dr. Alloway said that the primary difficulties revolve around the continuous evolution and development of our high school, particularly in meeting the evolving needs of our students. He emphasized the significant impact of technological advancements, highlighting that we have begun to explore the integration of AI into our educational environment, which he views as the next frontier. While further talking with Dr. Alloway, we delved into the question of how the school can uphold and strengthen its current culture while embracing necessary changes at the same time. Dr. Alloway emphasized the concept of sustainability alongside continuous improvement. He noted that while climate is influenced by external factors, culture is shaped by collective actions. He highlighted the widespread impact of social media algorithms, which often amplify negative discourse and overshadow positive contributions. Dr. Alloway stressed the importance of everyone within the school community taking responsibility for creating and maintaining a positive culture. He understands the significance of strategic planning and thoughtful reflection in sustaining and evolving our school, all, our school's culture, sorry. Dr. Alloway names a few examples such as the evolution of homecomings festivities and the unity of multicultural affairs as efforts to adapt while maintaining the essence of our school's culture. Notably, he mentioned initiatives led by various student organizations such as the Muslim Student Association, the Black Student Union and Asian Cultural Club, which have collaborated to create inclusive events celebrating diversity. Furthermore, Dr. Alloway highlighted the expansion of the college and career fair to encompass students' diverse post-graduation plans, whether entering the workforce or pursuing higher education. Ultimately, Dr. Alloway stated that the primary objective is to ensure that every student leaves our school equipped with clarity about their path forward on June 11th, which to those who may not know, is the day following graduation. This commitment to individual student success, coupled with an effort to nurture a supportive and inclusive culture, forms the foundation, the, the foundation of not only our school's mission, but the entire Upper Darby School District as we navigate the ever-evolving territory of education. Reflecting on his time as principal of our very own Upper Darby High School, Dr. Alloway shared some things that he will miss most about being principal and his aspirations for the future. He expressed that the most rewarding aspect of his role is often the subtle yet profound impact his work has on individuals within the community. Dr. Alloway acknowledged the experience of living differently within his role, where interactions are shaped by his position. Despite the bittersweet farewell to his current role, Dr. Alloway is eager to embark on the next chapter of his life's journey. He carries with him a deep desire to continue making a positive difference in the lives of others and within the district. Dr. Alloway's commitment to meaningful work, driven by the impact it has on students and families, serves as an inspiration for his future work. As we say farewell to him, we honor his dedication and commitment to our school's community. We thank Dr. Alloway for his tireless service and wish him success and fulfillment in the exciting journey that lies ahead. At this moment, Jade and I would also like to extend our heartfelt gratitude to Mrs. DeLosi and Mr. Galligan.
Mr. Comfort and Mrs. Menaker.
Mr. Rogers and Mr. Castertano.
Mr. Chisholm and Mr. Patrick.
Mrs. Campbell and Mrs. Gonzalez.
Mrs. DeVito and Mr. Williams.
Mr. Bridges and Mrs. Venteridis.
Mr. Rehack and Mrs. Simpson.
Mrs. Mion and Mrs. Newby.
Mrs. Palladino and Mrs. Rosen.
Mr. Remy and Miss, Mrs. Fuller. And last but not least, Dr. Alloway and Mr. Niagara. All principals and assistant principals respectively for welcoming us into their schools and many times, many times, going back and forth, responding to our emails as soon as they could. To say we got, to say we got to visit all your schools is one of the things we're proudest of and to get to sit down, chat, walk around touring the schools and talk with your students will be a highlight of our lives. To end our report, as I acknowledge it's a little longer this time than what Jade and I and even the audience may be used to, I'd like to say a few words to our esteemed new student school board representatives. As we stand before you on the cusp of passing the baton of this incredible privilege, we are filled with a whirlwind of emotions, a mix of nostalgia, excitement and a bit of apprehension. As stepping into the shoes of a student board representative is not just a role, it's a journey. An exhilarating, challenging and profoundly rewarding journey. As you embark in this adventure, I urge you to embrace every moment with enthusiasm and passion. This opportunity is a rare gift, a chance to amplify the voices of not only your peers, but every single royal scattered throughout 14 schools in this amazing district and try to enact meaningful change within our school community. Seize it with both hands and never underestimate the power you hold to shape the future. Build connections and foster relationships that transcend the walls of this boardroom. Remember, it's the people, the students, the teachers, the administrators, who breathe life into our collective vision. Nurture those connections as they will be your greatest assets on this journey. And yes, while it may feel like sometimes you're drowning in a sea of emails or facing down the haunting prospect of public speaking, take heart. This role is not just about the tasks at hand, it's about the impact you can make and the legacy you can leave behind for yourself. So to our dear successors, I say this. Squeeze the juice out of this ever-giving fruit of opportunities. Embrace the challenges and never lose sight of the incredible privilege it is to serve alongside the Upper Darby School Board as a voice for your peers. And before we bid goodbye, Jade and I again must extend our deepest gratitude to our principal, Dr. Alloway, and our assistant principal, Mr. Niagara, for choosing us to have such a high position. And to Mrs. Simone and Mrs. Buford, thank you for being, for your steadfast presence, your unwavering support, guidance and belief in us as they have been the wind beneath our wings. As we pass the torch to you, our hearts swell with pride and anticipation. May you carry forth the torch with honor, courage and a sprinkle of humor. Because let's face it, a little laughter goes a long way in navigating the twists and turns of this remarkable journey. Jade and I, with our whole hearts, wish you two the best of luck. It's been a long time coming and I cannot believe we're saying this. That was all for a month, for a final monthly report. Thank you for all your time.
I said, I said the reports were thorough and engaged, right? I said that, right? You good? Okay. Uh, the budget, personnel and enrollment reports have been made available to the board and the public and our recorder is part of the record, no vote is required. We will now have the report of the superintendent, Dr. Daniel McGary.
Back-to-back months where Jade and Fernando, I think it's like 24 pages of reports. You're gonna have to top that. I mean, no, no. I'm only kidding. Just before I quickly go through and honoring the students that are here, typically I do not give a report in June because we have a top 5%. We decided to honor that in its own special meeting, so the top 5% will take place tomorrow night. So there's usually not a, a report, but we had some outstanding athletes that we wanted to honor that took place over the last month. And last month's meeting was over 100 students that we recognized. But I would be remiss if I didn't say how much I've enjoyed this journey with both, you know, Jade, you and Fernando going back over time. Jade and, and both of you, I think, being part of the student superintendent advisory group, giving your opinion over the years, Jade, very strong opinion and dad was here, got to meet dad in person instead of over the phone. He's out there, he's so proud. Just an awesome job being who you are, representing the school community, um, pushing the envelope when you need to appropriately, but the relationship has been great. Somebody asked what do the, uh, how about the reps done previously? We've got a previous rep, uh, and an advocate who's, uh, uh, flying jets and teaching others to fly planes, um, which is pretty impressive. We have one that is gonna be studying, I think, in Oxford, uh, has already finished their degree in English education. I saw the sister who's a student here in the school district at the, uh, music marathon, trying to encourage her to come back to be an English teacher, but she's gonna teach at the higher level. So almost every single person, we've had a rep that went on, leaving, uh, Upper Darby High School and went to the Naval Academy, uh, and to be a part of the JAG. Uh, so we have a tremendous history of success stories that sat in the seats where you are and based on the nervousness that I see on your faces, which is good. Nervousness is a good thing. I think you'll, you'll do just, just as well. There's a lot of people that will be here to support you and I think Jade and Fernando would say the same thing. We only expect that you give the same effort that they give, which is to respect the school district and respect the community and give to your, to your peers, because that's the role that you're gonna be taking on and they took it very seriously, as you can tell. So thank you. And to the U D A S A members that are in the room, I mean, it's one of the better reports, recognizing all of you for what you've done as administrators in this district, uh, huge jobs, very difficult jobs. And I think they captured what you do very well every month, so thank you. And why people are probably mostly here, not for me or for, no offense to the board, is that, uh, we recognize every month, we take an opportunity historically to try to recognize athletes, teachers, uh, those who perform in the arts, music, theater. Um, last month, if you were here, you go back to watch the video, just amazing accomplishments in the athletics, science, uh, music, just incredible, incredible talent. And I, I have to say that it just continues. So tonight we're gonna honor, uh, some great track athletes. And so before you all clap, no, 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 hold on, hold on. And I promise those of you who don't want to be here for the other meat and potatoes of the meeting, we'll let you go. These, these are unbelievable accomplishments. And again, I know we talked about, uh, Ms. Mitchell, uh, leaving the board. But as a kid, I grew up here. I went to Upper Darby High School. And I remember as a kid, being an athlete and running track and practicing. And I remember, uh, Drexel Hill Middle School's baseball field, how bad it was as a kid coming and playing in the summer. Or being a part of a local y- youth track and the cinders at Drexel Hill Middle School that were original, probably Don ran on those as a kid. I'm much younger than Don. But that's how old those cinders are. And now you have brand-new athletic complexes. I would argue that we probably have the best middle school athletic complexes, do you agree? Probably in all of Delaware County, right? Um, and it's because of the previous board members that are in this audience and the board members that are here that pushed so hard to get you, the students, both external facilities and internal facilities uh, that you have. And so we're gonna honor, I think, the ability that you could practice on tracks. And, and the back of the room is Ms. Kelsey Beurling. I said this last month, I'll say it again. She was my high school, uh, British literature teacher and she was awesome. Unbelievable, inspired me to get into education and I, that means a lot to me. But she's also a legendary track coach, both here in the school district and serving and helping parochial schools. Our first rubberized track came at the dedication and the work with Ms. Beurling and her family. I don't want that to be lost on anybody. So we have the surfaces and the, and the resources that we have because of a lot of efforts of the community members and this board that are here. And it shows up because I got pictures, uh, at the Penn Relays. My son ran in the Penn Relays too, not nearly as fast as the students that are here with us. But when I saw the picture of Drexel Hill Middle School boys and Beverly Hills Middle School boys, one and two at the Penn Relays, the times were just unbelievable times, girls as well, phenomenal stuff. So we're gonna just recognize you, so don't clap yet until you all get up here. And what I love most is that I see the purple and gold uniforms. That eventually you're gonna be working together and running track at the high school, wearing the same, same colors, the same uniforms for the Upper Darby Royals. And I hope the scholarship we're giving you tonight, to stay with us as scholar athletes at Upper Darby High School, you stay and you run track there. But Penn Relays four-by-100 silver medal girls. Sienna Sharp, Beverly Hills Middle School. Marzia Jones. Namia Bell. And Ovia Lardrell. Lardrell, are you here? Come on up. Penn Relay four-by-100 silver medal relays boys, Kyrie Council, Denisius Tosa, Kaier Smith and Mustafa Dabo, if you're here. Only one, that's okay. So stay there with your coach and we're gonna call up Drexel Hill Middle School. So Drexel Hill Middle School Penn Relay Boys, uh, first place, Sean Williams, Safar Bolden, Jacob Serrano, James Wolo. And I know Kevin Rigby was a part of the track, uh, track group as well, if you wanna come on, come on up. And then Drexel Hill Middle School Girls, London Tyler, Amber Lewis, Renee Stevens-Evans and Zoe Hall, if you're here. So as I understand it, the Upper Darby High School Royals, uh, Boys Shuttle Hurdle Relay was accepted and has So as I understand it, the Upper Darby High School Royals, uh, Boys Shuttle Hurdle Relay was accepted and has been accepted to the New Balance Outdoor Nationals to be held at the University of Pennsylvania, the historic Franklin Field. I was just down there on Saturday, from June thirteenth through the sixteenth. These are the same students who placed fourteenth in the nation during the indoor season, fourteenth in the nation. One of the students, Daniel Chukwa, placed seventeenth in the sixty meter, um, hurdle relay, which is a true state record because all of the schools are eligible to participate. Outdoor States is a P I double A member school event where Daniel placed twelfth in the hundred and ten meter. Abdulai Sangrai. Gabrielle Sayo, Gabrielle Ollyani. Michael Ollyani. Aliu Surleaf. So why don't we get their picture?
All right. Uh, we will now have an update on the May twenty-eighth Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Ms. Williams? We'll, we'll read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
Yes, um, on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four, um, the Education and People's Service Committee met. The agenda summary was Wellness Policy Annual Update, which was an informational session. Then it went into the Middle School College and Career Path Planning Update, which was also informational. Followed by, uh, U D S D Committee for Student Safety and Wellbeing, which was also an informational session. And then it was the U S Department of Education Title Nine Regulations Update, which was also informational. There were policies that required board action, Policy two oh six and Policy eight fifteen. And then there was a public comment on Agenda Items two, three, and four. The speaker asked what the total cost of the three mandated programs that were presented are estimated to cost the district? And how much, um, have the legislators given towards these programs? And that concludes the summary report.
Thank you, Director Brittany Williams. The Finance and Operations Committee, we will now have an update on the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Finance and Operations Committee meeting. Mrs. Mitchell will read the summary. A detailed summary of the meeting, including public comments, can be found on Board Docs.
All right, the Finance and Operations Committee met on Tuesday, May twenty-eighth also, immediately following the Education and People's Services. We only had one informational item. The district administration provided an update on the twenty-four, twenty-five budget. The presentation revisited the timelines, historical data, and potential changes to the final budget. All that information is loaded into Board Docs for your purview and there are your preview and there were no public comments.
Thank you, Director Mitchell. Uh, the Instruction and Curriculum Report Approval, Director Damian War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. The Instruction and Curriculum Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Sorry. Uh, the Policy Report, Director Mitchell.
Personnel Report.
I'm sorry, the Personnel Report, Director Mitchell.
The Personnel Report is in the hands of each board member and I move for its adoption.
Second, are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. Policy Report First Reading, Director Disneuerz.
Thank you, President Fields. There is no vote required on the, um, first reading report. Uh, there are changes to one policy for consideration for a first reading at this meeting. As a reminder, this policy will be presented at a subsequent committee meeting and then must undergo a second reading at a future board meeting prior to taking effect. The one policy undergoing a first reading at this evening's meeting is Policy two thirty-seven Electronic Communications. I will now give a brief summary of the update. Uh, the, the full summary is posted to Board Docs, as is the, um, actual policy with the, uh, changes indicated. Uh, so there are several updates being made to Policy two thirty-seven at the recommendation of administration and following the presentation at the May twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four Education and People's Services Committee meeting. Uh, the two major changes are the use of personal electronic devices, i.e. cell phones and other devices by elementary and middle school students is prohibited during the school day and during any activity supervised by the district. That is, uh, for example, on district buses and vehicles. Second, the use of personal electronic devices, i.e. cell phones and other devices by high school students in the classroom or during any education related activity is prohibited. Uh, there are some exceptions, um, such as when the education, educational safety, emergency, medical, or security use of the personal electronic device is approved by the building principal or designee. Uh, and in accordance with the student's individualized education program or I E P or Section five oh fourteen. Uh, the administration will be communicating these updates to students and families via various means over the summer so that students and families may prepare for the start of the school year. That concludes the first reading.
Thank you. Uh, could you go to the Policy Report for the second reading approval?
Sure. The Policy Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second, are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public?
I'm sorry, I have a, I have a comment.
Okay.
I'd just like to give a, a brief summary of the, uh, the updates to the two policies. Uh, and, um, the summary of the updates is also posted to Board Docs. There are changes to one policy and one policy attachment for consideration for a second reading during this meeting. If these changes are approved by this, by the board in this meeting, they will be adopted and implemented. The two policies impacted are Policy two oh six attachment, assignment within district, and Policy eight fifteen, acceptable use of internet computers and network, network resources. The Policy two oh six attachment, uh, details school assignments for all addresses in the district. The Policy two oh six attachment is being updated to reflect the fact that, as discussed during the April thirtieth, twenty twenty-four Education and People's Services Committee in person, a virtual meeting. And beginning with the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, Aronimeng Elementary School will serve students in kindergarten through fifth grade. Please note, there are no changes to Policy two oh six language at this time. The only changes being considered are changes to the Policy two oh six attachment. And, um, changes to acceptable use, Policy eight fifteen. Policy eight fifteen is being updated to incorporate changes suggested by both P S B A and the district. The updates include several minor revisions that were made throughout the policy for consistency with other policy documents and alignment with E rate requirements and court decisions. That concludes my comment.
Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried.
For President Fields, I apologize for being rude to our audience and to the board right now. I was running around trying to check something out that I had, had received in an email, but I want to take a second. The Personnel Report, when I was running around, went through, I believe, correct? So I want to congratulate, uh, new high school assistant principal, Cameron Bush, who was with us last year. She's here with her husband. She's been sitting here patiently, probably thinking what the heck's going on. We usually recognize everybody. Interesting story, we stole Cameron from a neighboring district and made a kind of a promise. We did. Hold on, let me tell you how. She came here having worked at an elementary school with an elementary school background. We said we have a position open in the high school, working in the Special Education Department. You come here, you work with us and we'll get you to be an administrator one day in the district. And lo and behold, you did what you needed to do. I think we did what we needed to do. Congratulations to your, your, your husband. And, and you can go home.
Yeah, sorry. We're kind of blowing through a lot of these, but congratulations and, uh, we really appreciate you being on board with us. It's really, really fantastic. So thank, thank you very much. The Supplies Report, Director Mohammed Hussain.
Uh, the Supplies Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for this adoption.
Second.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. All right. The Facilities, the Facilities and Donation Report, Director Murphy Morrissey.
The Facilities Report, the Use of Facilities Report and the Donation Report are each in the hands of each board member and has been made available for, for its, put to the public. Before I move on to this adoption, I would like to, um, just thank anyone who made a donation and report last month. And now we can move on for its adoption.
Second.
Fantastic. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. The Food Services, the Food Services Report, Director Kimberly Glenn.
The Food Service Report is in the hands of each board member and has been made available to the public. I move for its adoption.
Second.
Fantastic. Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. The Finance and Budget Report, Director Deborah Williams.
The Finance and Budget Report are in the hands of each board member and have been made available to the public. I move for their adoption.
Are there any comments from the board? Are there any comments from the public? All those in favor, please say aye. Those opposed, please say aye oppose. Those abstaining, please say aye abstain. Motion carried. We now come to the Collateral Assignments Reports, Delaware County Community College, Director Murphy Morrissey. Thank you. Uh, D C I U Director Rachel Mitchell.
We meet tomorrow night. I have no report, but, um, Deborah, give me a call so I can fill you in on everything.
Fantastic. Legislative Council Director Kimberly Glenn.
Legislative meeting was held on May eighth. Um, a few things I would like to highlight are, um, first, on the Governor Shapiro's Basic Education Budget. There has been no deal yet, but there are talks. Um, we're not aware of any specific things at this time, but with that said, there are still opportunities for people to reach out to your state legislators and encourage them to not only vote on this budget to pass, but to do so in a timely manner. Thus allowing our districts to know their budget, what their budget will be moving into school year twenty-four, twenty-five. Um, there are some advocacy dates, um, in Harrisburg, tomorrow, June fifth, and again on June twelfth. And if you're interested in getting involved, um, please feel free to reach out to me directly via email. Um, that's listed on the Upper Darby School District website. There have been a few bills that have moved out of committee. Um, Senate Bill eleven fifty-seven, um, delayed school enrollment for children with autism development, mental delays or intellectual disabilities. House Bill five twenty-eight, tax credits for classroom supplies. It amends the Tax Reform Code, providing for a teacher ta- tax credit for up to five hundred dollars per applicant. And, um, the last that we heard, they're still working on, um, the cy- the cyber charter reform. We don't have anything yet, but hope tomorrow morning is our next meeting, so hopefully we'll have some resolve for this. And with that, that concludes my report.
Fantastic. Thank you, Director Glenn. Menon Hall Tyson Scholarship Committee Director Brittany Williams.
No update at this time.
Thank you. Home and School Director Damian War Savage.
No update at this time.
P S B A Representative Director Deborah Williams.
Thank you. Um, just a couple of updates. Uh, there's a P S B A Leadership Conference, um, not coming up till the following school year, October sixth through eighth, but registration is coming up. Um, the second update I have is, um, there's a newly updated Essentials of School Board Leadership Guide. Um, you can download that on my P S B A if you're interested. Um, and also P S B A, um, twenty twenty-five Officer Elections. Um, so you can, there's the nominations are being held until, uh, May thirty-first, and that concludes my update.
Thank you, Director Deborah Williams. Policy Liaisons Director Disneuerz.
Thank you, President Fields. So, um, one policy area that there will be work on over the summer concerns Title Nine, which is a federal regulation or statute. And, uh, there were changes, um, released to Title Nine in April. And they, uh, school districts must, um, implement them by August first. And so there will be upcoming changes to, uh, a number of policies. Any, any policy that, um, uh, deals with discrimination or harassment. And there's, there's a number of additional requirements that go along with the, um, Title, the new, not Title Nine regulations, including staff training, uh, public notification and so forth. So you'll be hearing more about that. Another, uh, policy area that will be, be worked on over the summer is, uh, artificial intelligence, um, so-called generative A I. Many people may be familiar with Chat G P T, which is the, uh, the, the A I technology that, that, uh, caused a big wave of public recognition, um, starting about a year and a half ago. Uh, so that the district, um, will formulate and adopt a policy governing, um, generative A I. Uh, so we will be working on that over the summer and that concludes my update.
Thank you, Director Disneuerz. Communication Directors Mitchell and Glenn.
I do not have an update right now.
I don't have an update either.
Uh, Upper Darby Arts and Education Foundation Director War Savage.
Thank you, President Fields. Um, it was my first meeting as the board liaison for U D A E F. We met, um, at Drexel Brook Meet, one of the meeting rooms in Drexel Brook on May twenty-first. It was your standard fare as far as a board meeting is concerned. We approved the last, uh, board meeting's minutes. It was actually the first meeting that was led by brand new U D A E F President Joe Lunardi. Um, it'll be a pleasure serving under him, uh, as we go through everything that the Arts and Education Foundation is up to, including the success of the recent Shainer five K, uh, upcoming pop-up programs. We also talked about the success of the partnership that U D A E F has forged with the U D Library System and their various events that are occurring. Please find the U D A E F on the internet and sign up for all of their available, um, community programs. It's really important, uh, that as many kids get involved, especially during the summer, in something constructive. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Director War Savage. Is there any old business from board members? Is there any new business from board members? Okay. We are now at the time for interviews of the prospective candidates for the board vacancy. I want to welcome all of you and tell you how much I appreciate you stepping up, uh, to apply for this vacancy. I want to welcome all of you and tell you how much I appreciate you stepping up uh, to apply for this vacancy. It is a labor of love, it is certainly not a labor for pay. We're going to explain the process, and then uh, some of you are going to go, we're going to order in, we're going to interview in order of whose resume came in first. The rest of you will be, will follow um, Director Marvin Lee over there with the pink dye to a separate room. So that each individual can uh, interview on their own. With the, I have some language I got to cover. Uh, the resignation of School Board Director Rachel Mitchell was accepted on May fourteenth, twenty twenty four, with an effective date of June eleventh, twenty twenty four, as per Policy zero zero four, Bog One. Filling a vacancy, the board has thirty days to fill the vacancy, so we're ahead of schedule. The advertisement of the vacancy was placed in the Delaware County Daily Times and ran on May seventeenth. The original deadline for the submission of applications was noon, May twenty fourth, twenty twenty four. The board postponed the previously scheduled interviews from May twenty eighth, twenty twenty four to tonight's meeting, and therefore extended the application deadline to noon on June third, twenty twenty four. The updated timeline was advertised in the Delaware County Daily Times and ran on May thirtieth. The applicant selected for the position will be fulfilling the unexpired term for Mrs. Mitchell until the first Monday of December twenty twenty four, so, you know, a year and a half. Time commitment includes monthly board meetings generally falling, generally falling on the second Tuesday of each month. We good? Uh, twenty twenty five, the first Monday of December twenty twenty five, pardon me. The time commitment includes monthly board meetings generally falling on the second Tuesday of each month. Monthly committee meetings generally falling on the fourth Tuesday of each month. Liaison assignments, school board professional development, where you take online training and stuff like that. The applicant will be interviewed individually in the order in which the district receives their application. As only one applicant may be in the room at a time during the interviews, the administration will provide seating in the hall for the other applicants to quietly await their turn. Each interview will begin with an opportunity for the applicant to make an opening statement that will be up to three minutes long. During each in- interview, each board member will ask one question of the applicants. Once all the questions have been asked, there will be a period for board members to ask clarifying or follow-up questions related solely to an applicant's previous responses. Members of the public may observe, but may not take part or interject at any point during the interviews. Public comment will take place prior to the vote. The board's process is not intended to include applicants questioning or debating each other, and no opportunity for such will be given. With that, I'm going to ask Riza De Silva King to please come have a seat. The rest of the applicants can follow uh, Director Marvin Lee to your quiet space. So as we said, introduce yourself, you have three minutes to introduce yourself, and then we'll ask the question, so, go ahead.
Okay, um, good evening, my name is Risa De Silva King. I have been a resident of Drexel Hill since December of twenty eighteen. Um, and so I am a transplant from New York City, I'm born and raised in New York. I'm a fifth generation educator, I'm a fifth generation community activist, and I have a little under twenty years' experience as an educator. Both uh, ten years in the classroom, then five years as an assistant principal, and then rounding out my career formally, uh, five years as an instructional coach. The bulk of my experience has been around serving students in the urban environment. And so I'm very well adept at um, identifying student needs, right? Coaching teachers so that they can meet those needs, and identifying opportunities for building rapport, right? And closing cultural gaps. I take a lot of pride in my career as an educator, I have since pivoted to be an edupreneur. So I now have my own company called The Silva Way. And what I seek to do is to support nonprofit organizations with uh, program design, curriculum development, and resource management, so I also serve as a grant writer. I've been doing that work for a little over two years now. I have two boys, Maximus and Malcolm, their ages eight and nine, and they are both students of Upper Darby School District. Part of the biggest reason why I'm sitting here in front of you this evening is because I literally picked Upper Darby School District to relocate to from New York City based on the educational outcomes. I want to be very transparent with you, I'm a product of a single home, single parent home, and I myself was a single parent, and I said, okay, here I have worked really hard for a little over, you know, under twenty years, and I want to give my sons everything that I didn't have. And so as I was starting to look at places right outside of Philadelphia, Drexel Hill and Upper Darby School District kept coming up, right, for me, online, as somebody who had no knowledge whatsoever. And since my sons and I have been here, they've experienced a lot of academic and social success. And so again, I sit here in front of you because I want to help to replicate the success that my sons have experienced for other students and families. I also currently serve as a um, Chief of Operations for a nonprofit called Safe Corridors. And what we do is we provide safety solutions to schools in the form of safety advocates. So we hire community members and we partner them with the schools where they actually live. I design the professional development for our safety advocates. I've created all of the systems for that organization, and we are pivoting uh, in preparation for next school year to serve um, four more high schools throughout Delaware County. And so what I've done since I've been here in Delaware County as a transplant is actively seek opportunities to widen my impact, right? Being a classroom teacher was very, very rewarding, but unfortunately, as a single parent, it didn't allow me enough time with my sons. And so as opposed to, I'm going to land this plane right now, I heard the beat. So as opposed to just leaving education altogether, I've tried to find creative ways to continue to serve and be of service.
Thank you, we'll go to Director Murphy Morrissey with the first question.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Uh, what do you consider the most pressing issue facing education in general today? And then there's a follow-up question.
Ooh, that's a big question. I think the most pressing issue is around teacher retention and teacher quality, to be very honest with you. We're seeing, and I'm, I'm an example of it, right, an extreme, what I, what's been called a brain drain. Quite a few educators are either retiring, right, or they're finding that the work is just, the workload is just too much for them to handle. And so I, I do believe that um, you know, recruiting, retaining um, and supporting teachers is, is the biggest issue facing education right now.
How do you best make sure to, to stay informed on these issues or that issue?
I'm a big reader, um, Instagram is my friend, but I really, I, I follow a number of, of news journals, Eduweek, for example. I stay in contact with a number of educational friends. And I seek that information whenever possible, again, I serve, you know, with a nonprofit organization, and so education continues to be what, what I read about and what I'm interested in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, hi. So what do you consider to be the most pressing issue facing the Upper Darby School District?
So I did a little bit of homework, right, um, and I've been following the school board meetings um, since January of this year. And um, I, I, I kind of want to put it into two areas, right? The budget, budgeting, everything having to do with budgeting. As well as the need for increased community involvement, right? I just want to share like maybe two points with you, right? So you guys have voted or will be voting on a three point two percent um, increase in taxes, right, for residents in Upper Darby, in the Upper Darby School District, right? I'm happy to, happy to pay that, right? But how do we attract more families? Because I'm seeing a lot of houses for sale in Drexel Hill and surrounding areas. So how do we attract more families with young children so that they feel comfortable paying that increase in taxes, right? And also how do we justify it, right? We have to justify it with outcomes, both educational and social. So like the, the, the budgeting piece, I think is one of the biggest issues facing Upper Darby School District. And then the other piece is around, um, give me one second, I'm just looking through my notes, I'm so sorry. Is around community involvement. For example, I noticed in the budget that only a thousand dollars were raised from private, right, from like a, a private source, right, in terms of the budget. I think that that, that there is a great opportunity for Upper Darby School District to be more aggressively, and not in a negative way, right, but just more aggressively partnering with businesses so that there are more um, outside or private dollars fun, you know, flowing into the district.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What uh, what relevant skill sets do you bring to the Upper Darby School Board?
So um, what I, what I would like to, I, I'd like to answer this question kind of like in a phrase, right, that three thousand foot view. So what that means is that I not only have um, the ability to understand what it means when the board passes edicts that teachers then have to implement, because I've been a classroom teacher, and so I can easily understand application, right, of, of, of new edicts being passed and new expectations being placed on teachers, right? There's that level. Then the second level of being a school-level administrator, right? So not only having to support teachers and students, but also having to meet the expectations of the board, right? I understand that. Then the third level as a parent, right, I understand, right? Like when there is a breakdown in communication between the board and the community at large, what are the possible implications of that? And then I think the fourth level is around the finances, right? Helping to, you know, have, being a single parent and having to pay the bills all by myself, right, just being honest. And then um, that coupled with now being in charge of resource management for a number of nonprofit organizations that I'm supporting, like that three thousand foot view of like, understanding when we make decisions as a board, what are the possible implications um, in, in terms of application? That, I think that that's the biggest skill set that I bring. I'm also um, you know, a me, I'm going to be honest with you, I'm, I'm transparent, I'm direct. I'm a New Yorker, so I, I'm, I'm still adjusting to, you know, to, to the, to the kind of like neighborly feel of, of Upper Darby School just District and Drexel Hill. But I'm, I'm a no-nonsense kind of girl, and I like to call things the way that they are so that we can be as solutions-oriented as possible. I have very strong writing skills as well as very strong verbal skills, I'm fluent in five languages, I'm well-read, I could go on and on.
Good evening, welcome.
Thank you.
So what do you think the primary responsibilities of a school board director are?
Oh man, there's so many. I think the primary responsibility of a school board director is to hear all possible sides, all, and to take into account all possible stakeholders. Right, so a school board director has to interact with all of you very successfully. Then the school board director has to be able to interact with the public and the media successfully as well. So I, I think that that's like the primary. I mean, also having background uh, understanding of education, right, and, and educational needs of students and families, of course, I think that goes without saying. But the, the people skills that are involved with being a school board director, I, those soft skills, I think are right up there with the hard skills of, of knowing the law and knowing the application of things, like the, all of that, I think can be learned, but the soft skills have to be acquired with time.
And perhaps you answered this part already, but what do you think your responsibility as a school director would be?
So I think that, I think that my first responsibility is to listen, right? Yes, I bring twenty years of educational experience to the position, yes, I'm a parent of almost ten years, but that is my perspective, right, those are my experiences. Being a school board director requires me to hear out and be open to the experiences and perspectives of others so that when I do chime in, I'm making an informed decision, not just from my perspective.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome.
Good evening.
I'm sure you've already kind of went over this, but um, this is a volunteer role, and can you tell us about any other volunteer work that you may have done?
Oh man, so, I mean, I'm going to be again direct, right? As a classroom teacher, um, I've put in, I think, hundreds of volunteer hours, right? Where um, you know, you come in early and you stay late, right, so that you can make sure that your kids are getting it, right? So, you know, my, my volunteer experience really uh, is centered around uh, my experience as an educator. No, I have not had an opportunity or sought out opportunities to volunteer in Upper Darby, again, I'm going to be very transparent, right? But um, I am hoping to have more opportunities to do so, um, and I'm actively looking for those opportunities. So what, what I can tell you is, you know, organizing kids to go to soup kitchens or doing drives, those types of things. I mean, I feel like those are run-of-the-mill opportunities for volunteer work that I've definitely done, especially in my twenties. But now I'm, I'm an older, right, I'm an older mom, an older woman, and so I want to seek out um, opportunities to volunteer and, and participate in my community that are going to have a great impact.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Thanks for coming.
Of course.
Why are you interested uh, in serving to the my school board?
So um, I, I live here, right, I, I live forty oh one Bond, so I absolutely love my house. And this is a community that I've observed for, right, quite a few years, right, I've been on the sidelines. Been on the sidelines looking and reading and watching and getting, you know, uh, becoming a Delco Times reader, right? And so, again, this is an opportunity for me. I think it's also an opportunity for um, me to be a representative of my sons who are uh, Upper Darby School District's students, right, successful students. And this is, th- this is something that I think will help me to expand my understanding of education, right, and, and its application. And so I'm, I'm, I, I think that this is an opportunity for me to take the next step in terms of my career as an educator, right? I've formally stepped away from serving in a school building, um, but I, I just feel that need, that pull. So I'm like, okay, if I don't go back to a school building, what could I do? Maybe I could be a part of the board. Thank you.
Thank you for applying for the vacancy and for your interest in serving the uh, the students, families and community of the Upper Darby School District.
Of course.
Part of the role as a school board director is advocacy for public education. What are you willing to do by way of advocacy for the Upper Darby School District?
So, it's like, I kind of want to turn the question on its head, what am I not willing to do, right? Resource management, you know, I, I don't know if you guys have a grant writer, you probably already do, and I would love to support them in that work, right? So that our district can have twenty-first century everything, right? For example, um, I am very, very willing to literally roll my sleeves up and uh, interact with parents, right, especially parents that we notice have not been active, right? Parents who, they pick their kids up every day, they go home, they don't come out to home and school meetings, they don't, right? Like there, that, that's a demographic and there's a great opportunity there, right, for us to interact with them, so, you know, organizing that and then following through. The, I think the biggest thing that I'm willing to do for this board is bring my follow-through, my know-how and my willingness to be solutions-oriented and kind of get the job done. I think that that's the biggest thing that I bring to the board, to be honest with you. You know, connections are cool and having political friends is nice as well. And I think that there's an opportunity, again, for Upper Darby to be even more well-connected. And so again, going to events, right? Volunteering, you know, literally giving up more of my time so that, um, because my sons are a little older now. You know, I can make them dinner and say, don't kill each other, I'll be right back, right? So you know, gi- giving, giving up more of my time in service of making sure that we as a board are very successful in meeting our goals and our deadlines. I, I think that that's the biggest thing that I would bring.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We, uh, and I'm the last question, I believe, but as President Fields had mentioned earlier, we all have very busy lives. The board position would add at least two evening meetings a month to your schedule and would require additional meetings and other time commitments in responding to the needs of the district as they occur. How will you prioritize these new commitments with your existing ones?
I'm type A as a result of being an educator for so long. And so what that means is like, I make lists every day. I make a to-do list every day, these two notebooks kind of govern my life. Um, and this is a system that I've created for myself so that um, I can stay on top of all deadlines. Um, and so um, I think that right now, given the fact that my sons are in a really good space in terms of their development, I can start to do other things that I always wanted to do, like serve on a school board. That's one, and two. The job that you all do is so very important and impacts the educational outcomes of my sons, right? The two young men that I'm raising are gonna be the fathers of my grandchildren. That's how important the job that you do is. And so this, this job, right? Because it is a job. It's, it's not just volunteer work that you all do. This job will fit very nicely into my schedule. And it's something that I am excited about doing. I'm not the type of person who's gonna apply for something and think, oh, I'm just gonna, you know, give a mediocre effort. So this is something that I'm really looking forward to doing and following through on because I actually have the time and, and it's something that I'm really passionate about and I wanna do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for the time.
Of course.
Okay. You'll have, you can take three minutes to tell us about yourself and how long you've lived in the district.
Sure, sure, sure. So, uh, good evening, President Fields, I'm Dr. McGrath. Board members and also to our esteemed administrators. My name is Dr. Lou Jean Ricky Kennerbrew. My family and I are proud members of the third district, tenth congressional precinct of Upper Darby, Drexel Hill. I am so grateful for the opportunity to be with you tonight. I just wanna take a second to just say how inspired I was by listening to the journey and the path of Director Mitchell. It was simply inspiring and it's brought me to the point where I was standing there and I'm going, you know, that is an awesome work. Being part of a constituency such as this board will give me an opportunity to learn more about the district, to learn more about the process of what is transpiring here in Upper Darby. I am honored to be with you this evening. As I seek this nomination, I am deeply committed to representing and serving the diverse community of Upper Darby with dedication and integrity. The Upper Darby School District is a vibrant tapestry of cultures and backgrounds reflected in the student body with nearly half of the student body being of African American descent. And it's my intent, should I be nominated to this board, to continue the legacy to be a advocacy for cultural responsiveness and to be able to serve the ninety-three thousand residents of this district with twelve thousand five hundred students, population forty-eight percent being African American. It is a rite of passage, so to speak. It is a mandate as an African American male educator to be able to be in a position to learn more and to offer what I've learned to future leaders of the world. So that is my foundation in terms of wanting to be part of this board.
Thank you. We'll go to Director Murphy Morrissey with the first question.
Yes, thank you. What do you consider the most pressing issue in facing education today in general?
I would say the most pressing issue facing education in general right now is grounded in AI. That is a cornerstone of what is transpiring right now throughout, not only Upper Darby, but throughout school districts in Trenton, New Jersey, throughout the world. Being able to utilize AI technology to facilitate effective learning is great because that puts us in the, you know, at the forefront of technology. Being able to utilize AI to decipher when students are kind of falling behind the curve and utilizing AI in ways that aren't so effective is, that's the challenge. So we have a challenge to be able to move forward with technology, but also be able to facilitate ways in which we are able to help our scholars and students foster good learning habits by using AI technology.
And a follow up question, how do you best make sure that you stay informed about AI?
For me, as a filmmaker, as an educator, being informed about it requires practices of inquiry. As a doctoral, you know, doctoral candidate, it's always, you know, that's the forefront. You need to continue to, to learn, to read and to ask questions. One of the biggest things that you can do as an educator that I do is to ask my scholars, ask my students, what's the thing that's happening out here now? How are you guys using AI technology other than, you know, utilizing it to write papers or utilizing it? So reading, staying at the forefront of what's happening in terms of transpiring in education, that's the, uh, the, the, the primary, the primary focus for me to stay in, to stay in, I guess, at the forefront of what's happening with AI technology.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. What do you consider to be the most pressing issue facing the Upper Darby School District?
I think the, as I'm looking at the numbers, um, I would say one of the most pressing issues could be having more inclusion in terms of Black and Latino educators. I don't know if that, um, that issue revolves around certifications, I don't know what that issue, but what, what the, the focus of that is, but for me, as I'm looking at the numbers and then looking at where we are in terms of appearance, in terms of what educators are in the district, I think that's, seems to be, for me, that would be it.
Thank you.
Could you see you? How are you? What relevant skill sets do you bring to the Upper Darby School Board?
The relevant skill sets, thirteen years of educating, cultural responsive learning, diverse learning, being able to foster education for all races. Being able to look into the future of what's happening in education and utilize that effectively. I think the other things that I bring in terms of skill set are visual arts, film production, cultural responsive learning, technologically driven learning. Learning how to, as again, learning how to use AI technology to foster effective communication, effective learning. So those are just some of the skill sets that I would love to, to share with, uh, with scholars and students and fellow teachers. Yes, sir.
Welcome and good evening.
Thank you.
So what do you think the primary responsibilities of a school board director are?
Well, for me, just listening to, uh, Director Mitchell, one of the primary focuses and responsibilities is to understand what the vision is, what's been laid out and how, you know, I fit into that role of making sure that it's enhanced and that it brings me to a place where at some point in time as a board member, I'll be able to implement an idea or implement, you know, a thought. But for right now, to, you know, to deal with such a massive learning curve, the primary focus should be to understand what the actual mission is and how the working, you know, the working process of that goes about.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This is a volunteer role. Can you tell us about any volunteer work that you have done in your history?
Sure, sure. As of recent, um, I would say, um, April of this year, I had the awesome opportunity to film a documentary for some young scholars who are from North Philadelphia. They had just worked on a hydroponic system. This is for an African Center to STEM, a hydroponic system. I had to shoot the documentary, it's a labor of love. A lot of, a lot of footage, a lot of editing, going into the wee hours of the morning. But what is most important to note is that the focus has to be on the children and what, you know, what they take away from it. So that's the, um, one of the, the, the most notable, you know, volunteers. So I know as a school board member, this is a, a, a great labor of love so that, you know, kind of fosters into what I am and what I do as a, as an educator as well.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Uh, good evening. Why are, are you interested to serve in the school district, the school board?
I think, um, about a week or so ago, I went to visit my mother in Tuskegee, Alabama. She's an educator, she's been educating for, she just retired, she's eighty years old. So throughout the civil rights movement, she walked, she taught. I grew up as a Catholic school student from K through twelve. She taught public school. So there was always this, um, this transferable lesson. Like one day you need, you know, you're gonna get these skills, you're gonna be educator and you're gonna have the opportunity to impact your community, your community. So I think that as we moved into Drexel Hill, you know, we've been here going on about twelve, thirteen years now, I was working through in the charter system. That's where I was, that's where the universe had me. But every day I would drive past and look at the various middle schools, look at the high school and I was going, you know, saying to myself, you know, I have these skills, I have the wherewithal and one day the opportunity will present itself that I can share with my community. You know, you've been here thirteen, you know, going thirteen, thirteen years. So I think the most important part of, of this is to be able to share, you know, my vision or to bring a vision to life, whether it's at the middle school, the high school, what have you. So it's about serving the children, it's making sure that their future or their vision is, is met. So I have a lot to, uh, to bring to the table for that.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for applying to, for the vacancy and for your willingness to serve the, uh, the students, families and community of the district. Part of the role as a school board director is advocacy for public education. What are you willing to do by way of advocacy for the school district?
Yes. One of the things that I, I think I'm willing to do is to find out and take the direction of what's needed. I may have a certain idea about what I think should be implemented, but again, this is a great learning curve for this position and it's not to be taken lightly. So one of the things that I'm willing to do as a, you know, as an advocate is to sit and learn what I should be advocating for based on the direction that I get.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Pardon me, good evening. I believe I'm your final question for the evening. As President Fields had mentioned earlier, um, your board commitment is going to include at least two monthly meetings and other ad hoc meetings, both in person and virtual as needed. How would you be able to prioritize those meetings and that, I call it a time sink sometimes, versus all the other things that you have to prioritize that you have going on?
So that's a very great, that's a great question. So the way you prioritize is you prioritize. So if I know that I need to be here on the second Tuesday or whatever that date is, it's non-negotiable, it's non-negotiable. You're here, you're here to serve in whatever capacity that you're asked to serve. So, um, part of my doctoral degree was educational and organizational leadership. So that's all based on time, on time management. There may be opportunities or, or instances where I would have to work around the clock on something than that, that's what needs to be done, so.
Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Dr. Kennerbrew. Okay. Thank you for applying. I want you to take three minutes to tell us about yourself and how long you've lived in the district.
Yeah, of course. So my name is Diamond Gibbs. I've been in the district since I was five years old. Was born in Southwest Philly, but my family transitioned over to Upper Darby in the nineties. So I've been here practically all of my life, I'm only twenty-six. So I've been to Upper Darby High School, I'm a graduate of twenty sixteen. I went to Bywood Elementary School, but actually transitioned out to Senko Elementary just because of capacity issues and also went to Beverly Hills Middle School. So I've been in the district from elementary to high school. It's been a pleasure and to actually be in this room, seeing that I've actually am stepping back into those school days where I just saw teachers that I were familiar with that actually felt good to be back here again. So knowing that I actually started my advocacy while a senior in high school, I was an ESL tutor. During my senior year, I was also the only black one and there were five of us in that room and just seeing how a lot of the students were treated and talked to and knowing that a lot of them came from very, very, very traumatizing backgrounds or encampments, that pretty much sparked my advocacy for them, knowing that a lot of them didn't speak English. So ever since then, my advocacy in the education field has just spawned.
Thank you. Director Murphy Morrissey?
What do you consider to be the most pressing issue facing education today in general?
So I will say the need to prioritize public schools. It is very, very concerning in regards to the issue about school vouchers. Knowing that school vouchers are pretty much pushing wealthier families out of the public school district, meaning that that's gonna cause a lot of harm to minority and marginalized communities, which impacts a lot of the students that are based in the county specifically. So no good would actually come out of that, knowing that a lot of the vouchers go towards families or households that already make more than two hundred thousand dollars and mainly goes to students or families that are already registered or attending private schools. So I will say the need to invest more in our public school system is a number one pressing issue.
And how do you best make sure to stay on top of, or stay informed about these issues or that issue?
Well, definitely staying on top of legislation. I know today that the PA House Education Committee passed bill, the House Bill twenty-three seventy, which talked more about the need to prioritize and invest in public schools. And knowing that it wasn't fully passed into law yet, it's still a process in the right direction. Knowing that we actually need to see those changes and we need to see that funding and we actually need to see those resources and services directly in our schools, especially with the funding issue and hoping that the budget is passed by the thirtieth. That's definitely something to keep up on.
Thank you.
Thank you. So what do you consider to be the most pressing issue for Upper Darby?
For Upper Darby, I will say even in class of twenty sixteen, we have had a lot of students who were suffering from behavioral issues and now actually being older and working more further in depth in the carceral system. There is a lot of students that ended up in the system altogether because of school referrals. So knowing that there's a lot of factors that contribute to why kids are acting out, whether it's behavior wise, emotionally, academically, there's a lot of things personally that are going on. And a lot of it boils down to one, underfunded schools, but also just underfunded districts and communities altogether, where we need to focus more on investing in those communities and even outside of school walls. We just need more resources and services that are available. Things are so limited to the point where it just feels like a lot of people have divested instead of invested. So it has been a fight to make sure that the kids are given a first chance and not necessarily a second chance, just because there's already so much that they're battling on a personal, personal level. So I will say the interconnections between juvenile justice and just the kids who have been impacted in the district have been very, very, very crucial.
Thank you.
Hi. What relevant skill sets do you bring to the Upper Darby School Board?
Absolutely. So as I mentioned earlier, my advocacy in education has started out when I was a senior in high school. It has just expanded out in many different ways. Now I have partnered with the probation office, juvenile justice services and other departments throughout the county that not only partner with schools that are serving young adults, so just a high school, but also just partnering with the middle school and elementary schools just to make sure that they're getting the services that they need. Now that I work specifically as a youth empowerment program director, there have been students who come in direct for services. So it's great to know what they are in need of and not only to just make sure that they're okay while in school, that they actually have a direct service outside of school. So I just feel like that mentorship during and after school have played a major role.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Evening.
Can you tell me what the primary responsibilities of a school board director are?
Yes, I will say a major role for a school board director is being a voice for their community and students, but also factoring in that families have been impacted by a lot of decisions the school board makes. So the fact that we are speaking on and advocating for families and students and also just the and also just the minority when it comes to funding, making sure that schools have resources that they need, renovations, that sustainability is actually active inside the schools. There's a lot of different roles, just as far as making sure that legislation is passed, but also figuring out how we can build up our scale on a local level.
And just a follow-up question, do you think your responsibility personally is any different? What do you think your primary responsibility is?
I would not say that it's any different. I'm still very, very passionate about the work and the kids, and just figuring out what could be the best way that they can not only excel, but just continue to grow and thrive within the district.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. This is a volunteer role. Can you tell us about any other volunteer work that you may have done?
Absolutely. So, that's a lengthy list. I will say I have participated in a bunch of things, whether it's helping out with prom a few years ago in the after-prom committee, that was actually really fun. Um, just seeing how things have changed over the years as a graduate. There have been many, many different times that even a part of my organization where we have volunteered just to bring services directly to the school district or the community as well. We had the Pride Festival at Upper Darby High School for a few years, which was fun. We were able to make great connections with GSA clubs and also students directly from the high school and the middle school and many different other departments throughout the county. And the volunteer work will always continue.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. Why are you, are you interested to serving on the school board?
Can you repeat that, please? I'm sorry.
Uh, why are, are you interested to serve on the school board?
Awesome. So, one, I am very, very passionate about kids and just working to make sure that they thrive in communities, knowing that sometimes there are barriers that are beyond their control, but just knowing that there is community support that is definitely rooting for them, and even just beyond the title, it really goes beyond that. It's really about the passion, if you actually care about the kids, and what you can actually do to make sure that they're reaching those goals that they wanna reach. Each kid is different, and I can't sit here and say that each child is easy to work with, whether it's behavioral issues, or someone like me who grew up with epilepsy, it was very difficult within the schools. And to actually just stay focused and academically, there's a lot of challenges and barriers out there. So just to let them know that they're not alone, and this is a community issue and not just a personal one.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much for applying for the vacancy and for your willingness to serve the students, their families, and the community. Part of the role as a school board director is advocacy for public education. Uh, you did, you did discuss some of your advocacy. What are you willing to do by way of advocacy for the school district?
I am willing to dedicate many time, much of my time and many hours, whether that's advocating in Harrisburg and talking to legislators, whether that's visiting schools and talking to students and staff members or educators directly, whether that's also spending time with you guys and just making sure that we have an effective plan to make sure that our students are okay, families are okay, and mainly staff members. And it just brings me back to the very, very, very pressing urge about the budget, knowing that we are already understaffed throughout the school district, knowing that potentially if that budget is not passed in time, that could lead to more layoffs, which could also lead to more academic barriers. So definitely will say that advocacy, advocacy will go based on whatever happens with this budget. If I have to be in Harrisburg, I would be there at the crack of dawn.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and I think I'm your last question for the evening. Uh, as President Fields had mentioned earlier, your board service is gonna require going to two, at least two meetings every month, plus other meetings as required. How would you be able to balance and prioritize that commitment to the school board and the school district versus everything else that you already have going on in your very busy life?
Absolutely. So knowing that this is actually a conversation that I've had within my organization, and just with other voluntary commitments that I already have, I do not mind, or even will complain at all about making this a priority, knowing that I already prioritize and work with youth, and making sure that they are thriving, that they're empowered, that they need the support and the resources that they need. This is just another step in the right direction to make sure that they're covered fully.
Thank you very much.
Diamond, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying. You have, uh, three minutes to tell us about yourself and how long you've lived in the district.
I have been with the district since the preschool lab first opened. So I went through the district completely. Um, I have three children in the district. One's moving on to high school, one's moving on to middle school, and I have another one in middle school as well. I am a manager of a startup spa, Heyday Skincare. Within that spa, I manage 25 employees. I also help with the franchisees market their businesses within their new markets. I also train all of our CEOs who are on track to be managers to help them get to that growth track, if that's where they wanna be. I also run trainings. I run payroll, I do P and L, um, HR, hiring, offboarding, onboarding. And I'm an advocate for my, my, my kids. I have, um, volunteered within the district, I volunteered within the community, and... That's all I can think of right now. I don't know if that was three minutes.
Okay, that doesn't have to be, we appreciate that. Director Murphy Morrissey?
Yes. What do you consider the most pressing issue facing education in general today?
Funding, staffing, and, um, the mental health of our students. I think Upper Darby does a good job of that. My son was able to take part of the mental health, um, facilities that Drexel Hill provided this year, and that was very helpful for him. So I do appreciate that, but I think those are the three, top three for me anyway.
And what, um, how do you keep, how you stay informed about the, the issues in the district?
Of the district? The website, um, and then being involved in school, um, the emails, things of that nature.
Thank you. Director Williams, Brittany Williams?
What do you consider to be the most pressing issues facing the Upper Darby School District?
Staffing and funding, um, and overcrowding of the schools. There's a lot of overcrowding. I know my son's very excited to go to the high school, but he's very nervous 'cause it's gonna be double the amount of students, so that's pretty scary. Luckily, he's a big kid, he'll be able to man the hallways. But I know it's doubled from when I was a student, and I know it was tough then. I know that cellphone use is a problem. And I know that funding's an issue and keeping good stu, keeping good teachers.
All right. Again, thank you for applying. What relevant skill sets do you bring to the Upper Darby School Board?
Um, my leadership skills, um, able to make relationships within the community with my, the way that I have grassrootsed and do grassroots for my company now. So being able to make connections and being, having empathy towards other people and their situations, 'cause you have to have that in management, 'cause different issues arise, and being able to multitask a business, trainings, and then my family life.
Thank you. Director Deborah Williams?
Welcome, thanks for coming out. So what are the primary responsibilities of a school board director?
From my knowledge, um, I guess it would be budget, um, making sure that the budget for the schools are allotted, and then making sure if you need to update payroll, you can do that as well. Policies and procedures, HR issues, and then most recently, the real estate of the new middle school for this particular school board.
And so what do you consider your responsibilities as a school board director?
It would be policies and procedures, I mean, everything I just named. Um, and then whatever you, the school board decided to, um, put on my plate and allow me to be a part of. Committees, um, after-school events, board meetings, um, being involved with conversations, private conversations, and making sure they stay private, that those are my, would be my, uh, responsibilities.
Thank you.
Good evening and welcome. This is a volunteer role. I've read this so many times and I still don't remember it. Can you tell us about any other volunteer work that you may have done?
Yeah, I did Highland Park Home and School while my kids were in home and school up until COVID. Um, I did the Parent Equity Forum up until COVID. I, like I said, I've done Upper Darby cleanups with my children. I've gone to different events for other political leaders to help rally for them. So I've done things on and off for the school district and within the community.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming. My question is, uh, why are you interested to work for the school board?
Well, I'm gonna be here for a while. Um, my daughter's only going into sixth grade, so you guys are gonna have me as a parent for a long time. But going through the district, having a parent who went through the district, and now being a parent within the district, I think it's really important to be involved. I've had people who were, who taught me how to be involved in the school district. And I think when you have a parent who is maybe non-traditional in that sense, who hasn't always been involved and now is involved, and on a board, you might get more involvement and advocacy. So I wanna be able to help the district with what I'm able to bring to the board, and really continue the changes that this board has already done. I understand it's a non-paid position, it's not very a glamorous position, I understand that. But I do wanna be able to make changes for my children in the future, ones that are coming up in the district.
Thank you.
Thank you for applying for the position and your willingness to serve, uh, the students, their families, and the community. Part of the role as a school board director is advocacy for public education. What are you willing to do by way of advocacy for the school district?
That's a really good question. So... I would do what it would take, whatever you guys would need me to do for advocacy. I don't know exactly what that would entail. I know that I have been an advocate for my student, my, my children and other children in the district, and I'd be able to take that skill set and help it, help, um, the board. I've been able to advocate for my employees when they needed pay raises, and was able to do that for my employees and my staff members. And I was able to advocate for different needs of them, so I know how to advocate. And I know how to navigate conversations and really be involved. But to answer your direct question, it would just be the needs of the school board, and I would definitely jump on, jump on board and help.
Thank you.
Good evening, I think I'm your last question person, uh, for this time we have together. Anyway, as President Fields had mentioned earlier, being a member of the school board's gonna require that you come to at least two meetings a month on top of any ad hoc meetings that are required in person and virtual. How would you balance and prioritize those commitments versus everything else you already have going on?
Well, my Google Calendar, but that's not for anything. But I'm already managing, um, my workload. I, like I said, I do direct and coach the East Coast of my business. I have to travel to work with the, um, franchisees. So I already have to manage my time really well, and I have to manage it down to the minutes. So being on the school board would definitely be an added, um, task, but it wouldn't necessarily add... I would be able to manage it functionally because of where I am in my business now, because I am a manager and I do have that leeway of being able to leave and come back and forth. But it would just be time management, um, which I feel like I have a really good grasp on.
Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you, Michelle. You can step out.
Thank you.
So, everybody think, again deliberations in public. I do wanna say to all the applicants, again, uh, stepping up to do this is greatly appreciated. And, and I can't express to you how much that we do appreciate. Uh, we had, uh, you're all great candidates, um, and we do have a tough decision. Uh, I do wanna say that, uh, you know, we can only choose one of you. You know, some of us are getting older. When I started, I had blonde hair. Now it's all this, right? I had no wrinkles, look at me. I'm like a wrapped-up paper bag. So there, there's, there's always, always opportunities to serve in this community, and certainly always opportunities to serve in the school district. Now, some of the board members are getting cold and they're tired of me talking, so, um, I'm gonna stop, right? Does anybody need time to think or anything like that? Does anybody even wanna deliberate publicly? 'Cause if you don't want to, I can go right to the nominations part. Are you guys ready for that?
I just wanna say and give a disclaimer. You, you already said it, but please stay engaged. Like, if you're not selected tonight, this is not the end. Things happen, seats always need to be filled, so stay engaged and keep, you know, keep coming back.
Thank you. Anybody else? Good, good, good? All right. So, our first order of business for this portion of the meeting is the nomination and election of a new board member. Uh, I do need to say one more thing. You will be, sorry, guys. You will be nominated and selected tonight. You'll get sworn in on the 18th. Director Mitchell's term ends the 11th, so we can't have, we can't have 10 board members, right? So, you'll, you'll know tonight, but the swearing-in will be on the eight, the 18th. Yes, ma'am?
Sorry, your mic is going in and out for social media?
Yes, I'm doing that dramatic turn so I can talk to all the applicants.
I appreciate.
One more time. You'll be nominate, nominate, we'll, we'll make a decision tonight. The, the, you'll be sworn in on the 18th of June, just so we're clear on that. And that is because Board, Board, Board Director Rachel Mitchell, her term officially ends June 11th. Okay? So as long as we're all clear on that. I will say again, our first order of business for this portion of the meeting is the nomination and election of a new board member. I will entertain nominations.
President Fields?
Yes, sir.
Would you like to nominate Diamond Gibbs?
Okay. All right. Is there a second?
A second.
All right. Okay. I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate, uh, Riza Silva King.
Is there a second? Second? All right. Okay, well, any other nominations that apparently don't require a second? Wasting my breath up here.
I nominate Michelle Pique.
Piquete?
Thank you.
That's okay. Okay, and apparently I don't need a second. All right. All right, so that's three of four. Any other nominations?
I nominate for the, Rachel.
You're, so you're also nominating Rachel, okay, that's fine. Okay. So I have three, three nominations. Is there, and I'm gonna need some help getting through the rest of this, but is there a motion to close nominations?
So moved?
Okay. Okay, we have a motion and a second to close nominations. All those in favor of closing nominations signify by saying aye.
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 Any opposed? Nominations are closed. Okay. Before Mr. Rogers takes a poll vote on the nominations, are there any questions or comments from the board, or any comments from the public? So from the board? Yes. So, again, I'm reading my script.
Yeah, I'm not, I don't have an issue with that. I just wanted to make sure the board is aware that the requirements under the school code to fill out a vacancy is five affirmative votes. It's going to require a majority of the full board.
Okay. Okay. So, any questions or comments from the board? Okay. Any comments from the public? Well, we're not at the public comment part, but, so you're waiting for that? You're good? Okay. 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 So now... Me? Oh, yeah? Okay. So... I am so exhausted. I am so exhausted. I'm trying, I'm trying. Okay, I need votes. So I have Riza, Diamond, and Michelle. Okay, I think Diamond was nominated first. All right, so Kyle, help me out here.
So what I would suggest is that you simply go down the board.
Okay.
The individual indicate who they want to fill that position.
Okay. Wait, the individual indicate who they want to fill that position? So I want to have everybody tell me who they vote for.
Correct.
Okay, so this will be like process of elimination, but all right. So I'm going to go down the board like Kyle told me. Director Murphy-Morrissey? After the bugs get out of your face? So I'm asking you to pick one. Yeah. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, that's thank you. Somebody's keeping track down there, right?
Michelle Piancentini Cao.
Fantastic. Director Williams?
Diamond Gibbs.
Okay. I'm voting for Michelle Cao, 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 Michelle.
Riza De Silva King.
Riza De Silva King.
Michelle Piancentini Cao.
Diamond Gibbs.
Riza De Silva King.
The, the vote outcome is three, three, and two. My suggestion would be that you vote again. If you get the same result, then that we eliminate the bottom vote getter.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to start back down there again.
Michelle Cao. Cao.
Okay.
Diamond Gibbs.
I feel like I know how this is going to go. Michelle? Director Williams?
Riza De Silva King.
Riza De Silva King.
Michelle.
Diamond.
So who's our two vote getter? No, no, no. Diamond's, Diamond's two.
Diamond has two.
Okay. So Diamond, thank you, right? We're now going to go, it's now between Michelle and Riza. Okay, and we're going to start again, right? Am I doing this right? Okay. Director Murphy-Morrissey.
Michelle.
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 Riza.
Riza.
Michelle.
Michelle.
Oh, it is Riza. It's Riza. So what do we have?
Four Michelle.
Michelle has five votes.
Okay. All right. Riza, thank you so much, and please stay, please stay engaged. Okay, absolutely. And Michelle, congratulations. It is really cold in here. You're welcome. Again, I, and, and I know some of you in your lives have heard this a lot. These were all incredible interviews, and I really, really do appreciate you guys taking the time. You all did an excellent job, and it, and it really was a hard choice, okay? Please stay engaged, right? And it's very cold in here. So I'm going to move on to the rest of the meeting. Thank you very much. All right, we're now at the time for the public hearing. We will call on Upper Darby School District residents who signed in to address the board in the order in which they signed in, followed by emailed and phone comments. We would ask that you come forward, give your name and address, present your comments in a three-minute time limit in accordance to Policy 903. The time allotted for general comments, both in-person and submitted comments, will not exceed one hour. On my list, Kyle McIntyre. Allison Dobbins, come on down.
Allison Dobbins, Harbor Avenue, Juxell Hill. I'll make this really quick. This weekend, I had the pleasure of working with a small dedicated group of parents to plan the 2024 after-prom. The point of after-prom is to provide a safe, fun, memorable experience to keep our students and the community safe on prom night. The students had an amazing time. And on behalf of Steve Sardi, the Home and School President, and myself, I want to thank everyone who helped make after-prom a success this year. I specifically wanted to take time at this meeting and address this school board to thank the district for their support of this massive undertaking. Dr. McGary, Dr. Council, Ms. Simone, Dr. Parkinson, thank you for being there. You've had a lot of events, but midnight on a Saturday is really above and beyond, although apparently we're going to head there pretty quick tonight, so. I do want to thank Dr. Alloway for all of his support leading up to the event and for his help during the event all the way through. I mean, he was there all through cleanup, right to like 4:00 AM, getting the last like giant tricycle out the door. Mr. Niagara, who's the assistant principal for the seniors and the senior center staff, they do all the work to make sure the kids are able to sign up for the after-prom. They do all of the work to get those students checked in and making sure that the right kids are arriving and have permission to be there, and it's a big undertaking. The support from Public Safety Building Maintenance is just invaluable, both leading up to and during after-prom. Setup for after-prom takes four days, so that's a lot of extra volunteers inside that building. And Public Safety in particular has been, was really just very patient and helpful. In terms of maintenance, Brad Correa, I definitely want to say he went above and beyond that week, and I really think that that was probably the busiest week in terms of events for the district. So again, like, we are just really grateful that you guys allow us into that space and allow us to put on that event. I'm pretty sure, I think almost every assistant principal at the high school took the time to be there that night, which is amazing. Again, thinking of all the demands on their time. Right down to, and there will be video posted at some point on the Home and School Facebook page, several of those assistant principals jumped in and demonstrated the human life-size Hungry Hungry Hippos. And if you've never seen it, you should definitely check out the video. But really, I especially want to thank the teachers who came out after school on Thursday and Friday, plus the teachers who helped out on Saturday night. Teachers have so many demands on their time, especially around finals week. And I get that these are extra, extra duty assignments, but these teachers, they came in and no job was too big, no job was too small, and we got more done in the hours that they provided during that time during setup than I think we did the entire, like, four hours prior to that. So I just, from the bottom of my heart, I'm so grateful to those teachers and to the school for allowing those teachers to sign up to support after-prom as part of their extra duty. So many students have taken the time to thank us for this event, and I really want you, the board, to understand how key the support from the school district has been. These students may have made it a truly rewarding experience. This is my third and final year doing after-prom. My children are graduating. My very first school board meeting was actually around this time when my kids were in kindergarten. They are now seniors, and we are leaving the high school. I do still have a first grader, but I will not be back at the high school for a while. And so I just, again, really want to make sure that the board understands how key that support from the district is and just how grateful we are. You will be pleased to know that there is a class of 2025 parent, Rita LaRue, who has stepped up to ensure that this tradition continues, and she's going to need your help. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dr. McGary, what was the over/under?
We're, we're under.
Is there a motion for the adjournment of the meeting?
So moved?
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you.